Called to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for May 18, 2017. Please join us for the pledge allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the people who worship it, one nation under God, indivisible, with no religion. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico. The ZS will refer to it as the maximum of our country.
Madam Manager, are there any changes that need to come to the agenda?
No, sir.
Commissioners, does anyone know of any changes?
No, sir.
Then I would accept a motion.
The agenda is presented.
The motion is second to approve the agenda as amended, as presented. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five percent "aye."
Aye.
Motion passes. Welcome, everybody. We're going to have public input now, and during this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question-and-answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual who would like to discuss an item in more depth may be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. We'll probably limit to five minutes, so if anybody has public input at this time, please raise your hand. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Push the white button, sir, until it turns red.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to discuss the two stop signs that were put in Loma Verde.
What's your name?
Glenn Lovato. 32 Van Tana Drive, Silver City. I'm here to discuss two stop signs that were put in by the road department, one on Loma Verde West and one on Van Tana South going north. And the signs are totally ridiculous. And I talked to the county manager. She told me about the uniform traffic code, but it still doesn't make any sense because they cut down the trees that blocked the vision on the Van Tana North. And I believe that the stop signs should be taken down because it changed the intersection from a T-intersection, which is the standard rules of the road to stop wherever has right way. And now they have the right way as Van Tana North. And I don't think that's fair. And I talked to Earl and the county manager about it, and nobody's gotten back to me. And I've walked on that road, and I've been hit once on the foot, and then I almost got run over by somebody coming from Van Tana North where there is no stop sign, and it turned out to be the same neighbor. And he did stop and apologize to me, but, you know, it's because the sun was in his eyes, and he couldn't be helped. And I just would like to have both them stop signs removed. If you go out there and see it, look at it, you'll understand what I'm talking about. There's absolutely no need for those stop signs. And I just have talked to Earl about it, and he said that the only excuse I was given was that there was ice on the north side, and that ice was from when they put in the city water. And they left a big groove, and there was ice, water, and snow that filled up that groove. And they never put sand or anything down, so the people were slipping. But now that the road's fixed, people coming up from Van Tana North actually do stop at the top of the hill without a stop sign. And I just don't believe that those stop signs are needed at all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Lovato, that is in my district. I'll meet an appointment with Earl and we'll go out and look at it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Commissioner. I appreciate your time.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. Lovato. Further public input in the back.
My name is Ron Henry, 414 South Pinos Altos Street. I'm a native New Mexican and have lived in Silver City for 23 years. I made a statement Tuesday night at that community conversation we had about the current situation with the cancer center. Since several of you were there, some of what I will say this morning is repetitive. One reason I came to Silver City and have stayed is because of the strong sense of community we experience here. I was diagnosed with a medically incurable form of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. At the time, the statistics said that it would likely recur in two to three years with an average or median lifespan of five. I stand here this morning, 10 years later, healthy. I believe that I am privileged to be here for two reasons: because of the incredible support I got from family, friends, and from people in this community I hardly knew; secondly, because of the highly professional and caring treatment I received at the cancer center. I have the best in oncology. I have the best in nursing. And at the cancer center here, I was not a number. No, they knew me and cared about me. In other words, that strong sense of community and caring was and is alive in our cancer center. Research is more and more showing how important this kind of emotional support is in the treatment of cancer. I'm sure there's some good oncologists at UNM, but I have friends that have made the trip to Albuquerque for an appointment and had to wait for hours to be seen, and then they couldn't get their records or phone calls returned. Simply said, it's a bureaucracy that doesn't or can't respond like our cancer center. I called our cancer center at night and gotten a call back from Mike Torres within minutes. I deeply appreciate the efforts of Commissioners Billings and Edwards in hosting the community conversation. Why? Because the community and the patients, as well as the cancer center founders and staff, have been totally left out of the decision-making so far. And we are the ones who will be most impacted by what transpires. Tuesday night, we were shocked to find out that contrary to what the hospital board has been saying, basically, the decision has already been made. They are now, as we are speaking, negotiating a contract with UNM. The interim CEO made it clear that the only thing that could stop this process now is if those negotiations break down. I appreciated what Chairman Red Caston said Tuesday night, and I quote, "We do appoint the Board of Trustees. The only influence we have on the Board of Trustees after that is whether or not they get reappointed." But listen to this part that he said, "A few years ago, you remember, we got a little more involved than that. That can happen. But the only time we can take a position on something is up here in a meeting with a quorum. I'm here to ask you, as commission, to get more involved, like you did years ago, and take a position that will assure the community and especially the patients that our voices have finally been heard. We don't need outsiders to come in here and take over something that's been built over a period of 22 years with vision, with devotion, professionalism, and deep caring, something that belongs to all of us, in a place where we are not a number, a place where everybody knows your name." I would like to add one more thing. Time is of the essence. If the contract negotiations are successful tomorrow or before the next trustee meeting, it may be too late to challenge this. If you have heard us, the community, and the patients, the cancer center staff, please take some kind of action soon. I apologize for having to leave. I have another meeting that I have to go to, but thank you for listening.
Further public input today. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Frank Biefeldt from the Wind Canyon Fleming Tank Road Project. I'd just like to say thank you to the commissioners, especially Commissioner Edwards, new members of staff. The project is going well. It's taking time, but it's going well. And the residents that I've gotten feedback from have been very satisfied so far. So again, I'd just like to say thank you. Thank you for your efforts.
Haven't very often just let you know. Better enjoy it.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, staff. My name is Krista Bolt. I live in San Lorenzo in the Members Valley. First, I would like to express my appreciation for Commissioner Billings and Commissioner Edwards hosting the community forum on Tuesday night, and for the rest of you who came. It was truly inspiring, the numbers. I was just watching people pour in, and I thought, this is the community speaking to you and to each other. So I feel like that community of cancer patients, cancer families, cancer survivors, we were heard. We were heard. Second, following upon, and I do want to reiterate the gentleman's remarks by Commissioner Caston, I remember a few short years ago, and I realize that while it appears that what the tools you have available to you are maybe limited currently in terms of working with the Board of Trustees that you appoint and that we look to to take care of our hospital, I want to ask you to consider what happened a few short years ago, because I believe that the next steps, you have some resources that you can be brought to bear upon this process, regardless of where these contract negotiations may be. I watched it happen. I watched the commissioners make very brave and bold statements and decisions that affected the hospital in a very positive way at the time, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your ability to do those things now. So I believe that as a body, you have some tools, and I think that you have some responsibility here to us. You heard us on Tuesday night, and the will of the community is something that I know that you would like to really consider and to see what actions can be taken. I and many others discuss, and we trust that you're going to do just that. We're depending upon you to further represent the will of this community concerning this very unfortunate decision of the hospital Board of Trustees at this point with our cancer center. And we're very hopeful, and we will be watching and be available to be of any help we possibly can to you. So, thank you.
You had 112 people in the room that night. I hope with all my heart that they go and talk to the Board of Trustees at their next regular meeting. I believe that is the 26th. I hope they speak with the passion they spoke with that night. I, too, want to thank Commissioner Billings and Commissioner Edwards for hosting that. I had no intention of speaking whatsoever. I was there as a member of the audience. I wanted to hear what was going on. The number-one thing they can do to help themselves is be at that Board of Trustees meeting on Friday.
Thank you, and I'll do my best to make a line coming out of the door of the boardroom.
There's probably a good chance some of us may be there also.
Excellent. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public input. Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, we'll get into minutes. Can we do both those at the same time? Approve or disapprove the April 18, 2017 work session and approve the April 20, 2017 regular meeting minutes? There's a motion, second to approve the April 18 and the April 20 minutes. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five percent "aye." Motion passes. New business: An update on secure rural schools. Oh, I went right by financial reports. I'm sorry. I do that once in a while. I get excited. Kind of like a puppy. All right, financial reports. Approve or disapprove the May 10, 2017 expenditure report? Linda, can you go through that for us, please?
Members of the board, we have an expenditure report to approve totaling $2,576,972.71. And some of the highlights are a check to Fuel Center Plus in the amount of $16,335.
Linda, I'm sorry, but there's some of those that are here. Can you speak up a little bit or turn your mic up?
I can't. Turn your mic closer. I can't turn closer. Okay, thank you. Okay, there's a check to Fuel Center Plus in the amount of $16,335.68, and it's for an off-road diesel for the road department equipment. A check to Southwest Concrete and Paving in the amount of $53,812.36, and that's for the Rosedale Road Colonia's construction project. A check to HCP Systems in the amount of $28,638.4, and that's for the March and April Medical Management Services at the Detention Center. A check to Summit Food Services in the amount of $44,109.22, and that's for February and March 2017 inmate meals. A check to Wright Express Fleet Services in the amount of $23,175.82, and that's for the March 2017 fuel charges. A check to High Desert Humane Society in the amount of $16,465, and this is for the third quarter animal control services. A check to Sacatom Construction in the amount of $106,477.25, and this is for the Alasimisa Fire Station project. A check to Specialty Communications in the amount of $13,162.5, and this is for radio equipment at the PA Volunteer Fire Department. A check to W S Starling Company in the amount of $14,000, and this is for hydrant booster pump for the Saco Creek Fire Department. A check to Don Chalmers Ford in the amount of $41,662, and this is for a 2017 Ford Expedition Command Vehicle for the PA Volunteer Fire Department. A check to Occam Engineers in the amount of $16,386.50, and this is for the North Hurley Road Colonia's construction project. It's for engineering services. A check to Ascent Aviation in the amount of $31,941.88, and this is for jet fuel at the airport for April 2017. A check to Southwest Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $70,473.80, and this is for the March 2017 tipping fees bill. A check to Fowler Brothers in the amount of $37,36.16, and this is for construction on Fleming Tank and Wind Canyon Drive for the improvements, road improvements. A check to White Sands Construction in the amount of $51,649.88, and this is for the Takasa Construction project. A check to Kansas State Bank in the amount of $25,523.56, and this is for a 2013 Chevy ambulance for Hila Regional EMS. A check to Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of $125,000, and this is for a mobile X-ray machine which was purchased through a capital appropriation. A check to Casco Industries in the amount of $47,306.25, and this is for various bunker gear at the Tyrone Volunteer Fire Department. A check to Morrow Enterprises in the amount of $221,285.53, and this is for the North Hurley Road Colonia's construction project. A check to Southwest Concrete and Paving in the amount of $11,335.18, and this is for materials for the school bus route projects. That's for the AP checks. The total of AP checks was $21,594.83, and then we have payroll checks totaling $417,419.39, and that is for pay period eight and pay period nine.
One question on your report. Why are we using Don Chalmers if we have Ford across the street?
They probably have a state contract, am I correct?
I know that the state contract, Ford has it here also. Why aren't we doing business here?
I can't answer that. I'll have to find it. I believe at the time this unit was ordered, we were not aware that Molly's had gotten everything in place to, and I believe there's a CES contract, not a state contract, but Jacob is aware of that, and we have disseminated that information to all the departments so that we are able to utilize them in the future.
Because for the past, well, six and a half years, we've been really pushing to do business here locally, and we need to continue to do so. Thank you.
Any further questions on the expenditure report? No? All right. That's why we have work sessions. Can I get a motion to approve it? There's a motion, second to approve the May 10 expenditure report. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say a five percent "aye." Motion passes. Now, can we do new business, Commissioner?
We can do new business.
Thank you. All right. Update on secure rural schools and payments in lieu of taxes. Today, we have the distinct pleasure of having Melanie Goodman from Senator Udall's office and Cynthia Hull from Senator Heinrich's office. Apparently Melanie wants to go first, so she can.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the county commission. My name is Melanie. I'm a field representative for Senator Tom Udall. Thanks for the invitation to provide an update. I'll provide a brief update on secure rural schools and on PILT, which is a payment in lieu of taxes. Funding, I'll also give a very brief background on each program. I suspect you all are very familiar with them already. I'll talk about the current status of the funding and on the future of both of these programs. And then I'll briefly mention what Senator Udall is doing related to the two programs. The federal lands can't be taxed, but they may create a demand for services such as fire protection, police cooperation, or longer roads to skirt federal property. Under federal law, local governments, usually counties, are compensated through various programs for reductions to their property tax basis due to the presence of mostly federally-owned land. And two such programs, R-S-R-S, are secure rural schools and PILT. They are separate programs, and they have different criteria for what funds them. Often, folks try to lump them together, but one is really a royalty payment and one is payment in lieu of taxes. So what's PILT? It's authorized by the Payment in Lieu of Taxes Act, and since counties and other local jurisdictions are prohibited from taxing federal lands, such as Forest Service lands or BLM lands and other federal lands, these annual PILT payments help counties defray costs with maintaining services. PILT funds are essentially federal payments to rural counties that contain federal land, including national forests and parks. You use your funding to provide police, fire protection, emergency response, road maintenance, and other crucial services to residents. And for counties with national forest land, PILT payments supplement the secure rural schools program to help ensure that local government services receive adequate funding. It's my understanding that New Mexico receives in total PILT funding about $37,770,954, and Grant County in 2016 receives about $2.13 million in PILT funding. That's for a little over a million acres of federal land, and PILT is based on this total acreage. So the current status of PILT, so in 2016, Congress did fully fund PILT at $452 million. And on May 4, so just a few weeks ago, Congress passed, and the President signed an omnibus appropriations bill to fund the government through September 2017. And that bill included full funding for PILT. That's about $465 million for payments to counties. The amount provided supports the Department of Interior's updated estimates to fully fund payments in fiscal year 2017. The future of PILT, the President is proposing a $50 to $80 million cut in PILT. That's about $50 million compared to current levels, or $80 million compared to the congressional bills for fiscal year 17. His proposal is to reduce funding for PILT by setting the program at its 10-year average funding level. The specific budget amounts aren't available yet, and fiscal year 17 PILT appropriation has not yet been enacted, but this proposal could amount to a cut of more than 10% for the program in fiscal year 18. Secure rural schools, it's administered by the Forest Service. Grant County in 2016 received SRS payments of about $712,000. Secure rural school payments support public schools, public roads, forest health projects, essential search and rescue and emergency services, and many other county programs in more than 720 counties and 4,000 school districts, impacting 9 million students across 41 states. The Act also helps for restoration and stewardship projects on our public lands and forests. So payments in SRS are based on historic timber receipts for those counties from Forest Service lands. A little bit of background, counties with national forest lands and with certain BLM lands historically have received a percentage of agency revenues primarily from timber sales to supplement local funding for education services and roads. That was 25% of the revenues generated from timber sales from our national forests. However, over the last 30 years, timber sales have declined substantially, by as much as 99% in some counties and more than 70% nationwide, which obviously led to substantially reduced payments to counties. So in 2000, Congress enacted a Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act to restore the funding historically provided by this revenue sharing in light of the significant losses faced by forest counties as timber revenues declined. So it replaced these revenue sharing with a guaranteed level of payments that was no longer tied to the amount of timber produced from the national forests. It was intended to be a temporary, optional program of payments based on historic rather than current revenues. The secure rural schools, so this is the current status, secure rural schools was last funded in fiscal year 2015 at $278 million. It expired in September of that year, but has not been reauthorized for fiscal year 2016 or beyond. Forests, counties, and schools received their last authorized payment in March of 2016. Unless the SRS program is reauthorized, payments to counties will revert to the permanently authorized 25% revenue sharing authorized in the National Forest Revenue Act of 1908. That means that counties who depend on this funding, which is a much higher payment than PILT, will see a decline. And that is particular for counties, that is in particular for counties who have lots of forested land with high timber production. I believe in Grant County, and correct me if I'm wrong, county manager Webb was about $26,000 for this year, significantly lower because it wasn't reauthorized, so it reverted back to the, you know, original procedure of payment. So it needs to be retroactively extended to authorize payments per fiscal year 2016. So the future of SRS, so as I talked about, it was designed to compensate for declining timber receipts. It was never designed to be a permanent program for those communities. And unfortunately, after, you know, 15-plus years of funding, most of these communities did not build new or different revenue streams. So there is now a kind of a cliff, if you will, associated with the program. The President's budget that he proposed is silent on the future of this SRS program. On May 2, 2017, the Senate Energy and Natural Resources Committee had a hearing on the reauthorization of the secure rural schools program, and it does have broad bipartisan support, and I suspect Cynthia Hull from my colleague from Senator Heinrich's office, he sits on the Energy and Natural Resources Committee, might be talking a little bit more about that. But during that hearing, members of the panel and the committee were vocal about their concerns that without reauthorization of SRS, PILT payments for all counties may be reduced to cover those counties that were previously receiving a lower PILT payment because of its share of the SRS payment. There was also bipartisan agreement that more active forest management is needed, in particular to address wildland fire. Everyone also agreed that the current practice of fire borrowing to fund suppression efforts needed to stop, and adequate funding directed at fire and fuels management needs to be allocated. On May 4th, so just a couple of days after that hearing, where we did see and hear good bipartisan support for the reauthorization of Secure Rural Schools. Senators Hatch from Utah and Ron Wyden from Oregon introduced, they're respectively the chairman and the ranking member of the Senate Finance Committee, introduced legislation that would extend the Secure Rural Schools program for an additional two years. So a bill has been introduced. We don't yet have much detail on what the 2018 appropriations are going to be. Like I said, the President, his budget is silent on this. And finally, just in closing, I wanted to just share a little bit of where Senator, what Senator Udall feels about this and what his position is. He recognizes that uncertainties about Secure Rural Schools and PILT make it very, very difficult for local governments to plan their annual budgets. Counties that rely on Secure Rural Schools payments have told him that they're just simply unable to meet their governing needs without these funds. And so he supports a long-term reauthorization of the program. That is his position on this program. PILT remains a discretionary program that is subject to the annual appropriations process. So it does create some uncertainties for counties as they work to develop and implement budgets every year. Senator Udall strongly advocated for full funding on the Appropriations Committee, where he is the lead Democrat on the Interior Subcommittee, which handles the payment in the PILT program. So he's on that appropriation Subcommittee. And so he'll continue to use his position on that committee to fight for these two programs, given that our counties, many, many, many counties in New Mexico are still expected to provide essential services, you know, on their public lands. And he also supports a long-term reauthorization of PILT. Finally, he secured $407 million in emergency funding in this appropriations, in this omnibus appropriations bill that I just talked about earlier. There was $407 million in that bill for emergency funds for fighting wildfires. This is upfront funding, which means that the Forest Service will no longer have to raid programs like forest health and restoration to fight wildfires. And so this is, he feels this is very, this is great news for New Mexico's forests and watersheds, something that can't be underestimated after the last few years of big fires. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Melanie, does anybody have questions for now? Go ahead, Jerry.
I had a couple of questions. One, you alluded to a connection between PILT and Secure Rural Schools funding when you said that there'd be an effect on PILT for those who'd been getting Secure Rural Schools. Could you explain that connection?
Okay, sure. And I'm definitely not an expert, and I bet Charlie would be able to do a better job. But just in case you'd asked me that question, I do have a little bit of information on that from the Congressional Research Service, actually. So what is the relationship between PILT payments and Secure Rural Schools Act payments? Actually, this comes from, I believe, the Secure Rural Schools website that is under the federal agency. So a county that has been receiving PILT payments, in addition to its 25% payment, continues to receive a PILT payment, okay? A county's PILT payment may be reduced if the county receives a share of the state payment that is larger than its share of the 25% payment that would have been, okay? The formula for PILT considers other prior year federal land payments in its calculation. Counties that receive increased funding under the Secure Rural Schools Act may find that their PILT payments are reduced. This will not affect counties already receiving mandatory minimum PILT payments. For example, the counties that already receive large federal land payments. PILT payments for these counties would remain unchanged. In general, only the roads portion of the schools and roads allocation, which is commonly called Title I, and the Title III allocation is considered in the PILT calculation. The portion of the state payment allocated for schools in the Title II allocation are not considered in the PILT formula. What I didn't, what I didn't talk about is the specifics of Secure Rural Schools. There's three different titles, three pots of money under Secure Rural Schools, and I can talk about that if you'd like, or describe those. Okay. I hope that answers your question.
It makes sense that what goes to schools doesn't affect what we get in PILT. But, so just to follow up, it doesn't sound like there's a one-to-one correspondence between what we get in the over 25% SRS allocation and what we lose in PILT. That's your impression also, right?
It is, but I'm not an expert on this. And I would, you know, like to, you know, really make sure we get your question answered correctly.
So if Charlie can help me out. And we are not one of those counties that is receiving the mandatory minimum that you referred to. Is that correct? Because that, you referred to this group of counties that's exempt from getting cut with SRS payments because they're getting the mandatory minimum thing. We're not one of those counties. Right. But apparently we're also not just receiving the mandatory minimum, we're getting more.
Right.
And therefore we can be cut.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, it may be easier for you to answer my only other question. What percentage of the SRS payments goes to Title II, which I gather is schools? And what percentage goes to one and three?
I am not, I don't know the answer to the part of percentage breakdown. I'll have to get back with you. So Title I's are the payments to states and counties to help you pay for schools and roads. Title II can be used for protection, restoration, enhancement of fish and wildlife habitat. It can do like road and trail infrastructure maintenance, things like that, watershed restoration. And that's where, if you've heard of Resource Advisory Committees or the RAC, RACs, they advise the Forest Service on how to allocate those funds. That's a competitive process. And Title III funds help counties conduct fire-wise community programs or reimburse you for your emergency services, things like, things like that. But I don't know the percentage breakdown.
So on the $407 million of emergency funds for wildfires, is that going to be allocated directly to the counties or is it going to be allocated to specific fires? How's that going to work?
I believe that's a fund that goes to the Forest Service.
Okay. So it will go directly to the Forest Service?
To help them.
So it doesn't actually, it won't actually affect us unless there's a fire? In other words, they won't spend it?
It's indirect in how it would help you, because right now, the Forest Service has, you know, a fund of money to fight wildfires that hasn't been enough.
Enough.
Enough, because of the scope and scale of fires that have been burning over the last few years. And the way we fund firefighting now, you know, needed to be changed, quite frankly. And so that's, and then also funding needed to be appropriated to do that. And so that's the funding that I'm talking about.
So do you know how much was spent on fighting wildland fires last year?
No, I don't. That could be, I think it's an extraordinarily high amount, which is part of what I think led Congress and Senators Udall and Heinrich to really fight for this kind of change. They were basically, you know, having to go into other funds that weren't dedicated for fighting fires, but really for, you know, managing our forests, which in the long run can help reduce the risk of fire. And so this was something that we really welcomed, and I know that our Forest Service community strongly, and our firefighters strongly support it as well. And so indirectly, it'll help Grant County, you being here in Hila.
I'm just curious to know how close it came to covering the exact costs.
I don't have an answer to that, but we can come back and provide some of that information on this particular issue to the Commissioner, if you'd like.
I know in past reports, Commissioner, that they have talked about having to take operational funds to finish paying for fires, but those fire funds can be moved all over the nation. They're not just here. They can, if we don't have fires, they're available to be moved, because they have different teams that are national teams that come in, and those resources are spent out of a national cash rather than Hila's cash.
Any further questions? So we may have some more after Ms. Hull passes.
I do want to thank you for bringing up that, about the last point you made was the need to manage our forests to reduce the risk of fire. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Bye-bye.
Okay. Ms. Hull?
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Very well, oh, very well. How are you?
Oh, you took your scarf off. It must have warmed up.
Yes, I warmed up and I'm good to go, so. Well, thank you for the opportunity, and I'll try to not be repetitive. Melanie did a wonderful job. So I'm going to try to just highlight a little bit more information, just some of what Melanie mentioned, I'll try to kind of expand on as well. And again, Cynthia Hull with Senator Heinrich's office. I'll begin by just kind of focusing my portion of the presentation on kind of what to expect going forward, and also in terms of the Senator's stance on these two issues. So as Melanie had mentioned, I won't go into the SRS or PILT program in greater detail beyond what she mentioned, but I think what is important to mention on my end is that Senator Heinrich, again, he does continue to fight for the long-term authorization and funding for SRS. Again, that remains as one of his highest priorities. Again, he will also continue to fight for permanent guaranteed funding for PILT as well. Melanie had mentioned that earlier this month, the Senator, he actually took part in an Energy and Natural Resources Committee hearing, and he had the opportunity to highlight a lot of the needs of counties throughout the state of New Mexico. So again, I think, Grant County as well, for providing some of the information. And again, the Senator had that opportunity to talk about the tremendous impact that not reauthorizing the Secure Rural Schools program, how, the tremendous impact that has in New Mexico. As Melanie had mentioned, it helps pay for essential local services throughout the state. And again, he did introduce earlier, he did join the bipartisan effort earlier this month to introduce legislation to reauthorize Secure Rural Schools program. And basically, the main, the main diss that Melanie had mentioned is that the legislation does reauthorize SRS for two additional years. It does retroactively make payments to the counties going through fiscal year 2016 and Sorry, I'm just trying not to be repetitive, so I'm skipping a couple of this, a bit of the information I have here. Kind of, I think one of the things that was mentioned to us is to kind of share a little bit about what to expect going forward, what is the Senator focusing on. In terms of Secure Rural Schools, it's important to mention, just as Melanie had, that it's not a partisan issue. It does have bipartisan support in the Senate, and there is also support for a midterm fix. The main challenge, and I think it's important to mention, one of the main challenges to reauthorization is the House's opposition to spending more money unless it's linked to forest management reform. And it will take time, and that's the key. It's going to take time to resolve those differences in forest management policy. And due to the current situation, as you know, counties in New Mexico are receiving significantly less money because the funding allocation does rely on forest program receipts. And again, a lot of the counties are getting significantly decreased amount of money. So Senator Heinrich, I think it's important to mention, he is very much in support of looking at forest management reform. But what's important to consider is that while that time-consuming process takes place, he does believe that Congress does need to take action to fix SRS now. And it's important, again, to address the negative impacts that the SRS expiration has had on counties throughout our state and throughout the country. As I had mentioned before, during the ENUA hearing earlier this month, Senator Heinrich had the opportunity to highlight the impacts of the absence of the SRS funding in our counties. Senator Heinrich has also highlighted the need for full funding of the Payment in Lue of Taxes program or PILT, and again, with SRS. So that's kind of a little bit of the challenges that we face. Again, in summary, one of them being that there is an opposition to spending more money unless we do work at forest management reform. It's going to take a long, it's going to take a significant amount of time to resolve some of the differences. All of a sudden, the Senator is very much in support of looking at forest management reform. We need to take action now. In terms of PILT, so as had been mentioned before, the PILT formula does take into account other federal payments, including SRS. So the states have, again, as I mentioned, given the expiration of SRS, the states have significantly reduced payments. And as a result, the demand for PILT money will increase to about $160 million for the following year, which is about an over 25% increase in the required federal funding allocation. And one of the main challenges to share with you is, as I had mentioned, the current opposition in the House to spending more money will be a challenge in terms of coming up with that added 25% for PILT next year without the requirement to cut other programs. So again, that's going to be a difficult topic to bring up the following year. Senator Heinrich is very concerned about the uncertainty, both regarding the amount and timeliness of PILT payments. As you know, due to the fact that the allocation of PILT is reliant on Congress passing a final appropriations bill to fund government, what that means is that in terms of PILT, delays in annual appropriations also lead to funding allocation delays for PILT program. So he's been very vocal in terms of trying to, trying to enable a more certain funding mechanism. So that's a little bit in terms of what the Senator is doing, some of the potential impacts. Does anybody have a question?
I have a question, just in case anybody's wondering this. In fiscal 2015, we received almost $400,000 for roads, which isn't the full SRS amount. And in fiscal '16, $330,000. And in the current year, it looks like about $12,000. So if you, if Congress sees fit to provide a retroactive payment for fiscal '16 as well as the current year, seems like we're talking about something like $600,000, just to get an idea of what it means to our county, four county roads for those two years. And Charlie's nodding, so. It's not so much a question. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's just that I found the number and I wanted to share it. So, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, thank you guys very much for coming today. I know it's not easy to get up here. You're welcome all the time. You can come anytime you want. Okay? Thanks, Melanie.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd like to point out that though Steve Pierce, Representative Pierce, didn't have Representative here, he did send a letter, which is in our possession. And so all three of you, including the two Senators and Representative Pierce, mentioned forest management. And I don't know, I think that means different things to different people, but I hope that, I know that we used to have less fires than we do now under different forest management. And I think we can look at some of the history and realize that there were some things we were doing in the '60s and '70s and '80s that we're not doing now that could help stop some of these fires and also provide a positive economic impact to our counties. That's, I just wanted to leave that with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And we did give the letters to the press, I believe, right? Okay. Thank you guys very much. Next item on the agenda is approve or disapprove proclamation declaring June 16 through the 18 18 as Fiesta Latina. Bernadette, do you have time to read that?
I have written it, members of the board. Whereas W N M U's Cultural Affairs Office is planning for the first time a weekend event filled with family fun and Latin twist. And whereas W N M U will be a host for the Latin culture, rhythms, flavors, artisan crafts, and tequila tasting, all located on campus. And whereas the weekend kicks off at 5:00 PM Friday, June 16th, with a sneak peek and opening reception. Tickets to the reception will be, will include a cash bar, light snacks, and performance by Bara Gutanga. And whereas headliner for the event, Silver City native Tobias Renee will be performing his New Mexico Tex-Mex style of music on Saturday, June 17th. And whereas Fiesta Latina will be family-oriented with children's activities and well-rounded events for everyone. For a schedule of events, please visit www.fiestalatina.org. Now therefore be resolved that the governing body of the county of Grant does hereby proclaim June 16th through June 18th, 2017 as Fiesta Latina.
Do you have something to say about it?
What was the numbers on the audience? We have two people in the committee. Everybody knows Fay McCowen and we have Virginia Cuevas and a couple of other individuals from the university. So, I would just like to make a couple of statements real quick. Quiero invitar a todos a la Fiesta Latina en la fin de semana, el día de los padres. El 16 de junio se presenta en la universidad. Es una experiencia cultura, nuestra cultura y la cultura latina no sabe de la frontera. Se embarras la nuestra raíz de México. Seré vendido para todos actividades para los niños, música, bailes y comida tradicional y más. Bien y disfruta. I would like to invite everybody in the citizens of Grant County to the Fiesta Latina on Father's Day Weekend. 16th of June, the festival is celebrated by culture and culture of bridging borders as many exciting rhythms and flavors. There will be a low fun for everyone, art activity for the children, tradition music, food, workshops, and bands. So, please come on to Western New Mexico University campus and please celebrate with us. And I would like to have Phil, Fay, and the people from the university come up if you would, please.
So, are they gonna speak?
No, do you want to speak?
Because we haven't asked the resolution yet.
Oh, go ahead.
It gives me great privilege to ask that we approve the proclamation declaring June 16 through 18, 2017 as Fiesta Latina.
Is the motion a second to declare June 16 through the 18th as Fiesta Latina? Is there any discussion on that motion?
I just wanted to add one thing. We don't have time after we go down and take our pictures, et cetera. And that's, but it's my understanding you have a need for volunteers to help out. I think you do an amazing job coordinating volunteers, Fay. And they can go to the website that Bernadette read, www.fiestalatina.com, or it's dot org. And there they can find out about the volunteer opportunities, is that right? Okay, thanks, just wanted to add that plug.
All right, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, say five, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. As soon as we get this signed, we'll come on down. If I didn't sign, I'll do it for you. You didn't realize you was gonna be the target of that, did you? Melanie, yeah?
Commissioner, Commissioner, Melanie was able to obtain some numbers to answer Commissioner Edwards' question about the spending for wildfire suppression for last year. It totaled almost $2 billion, $1,975,545,000. She will work on getting numbers from Mexico, but that was nationwide between the Department of Interior and the U.S. Forest Service.
We don't have that much burn anymore, most of his burn.
Scary number.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Approve or disapprove the solid waste accounts, Ted?
Good morning, Ted. Good to see you.
Good morning. Good morning. I come before the Commissioners to, to...
Bring my cup.
I come before the Commissioners to seek approval of the delinquent solid waste liens. Any accounts over $100 do qualify to be, have the lien placed on after observation and, you know, observation and, and looking into the circumstances where we have correct mailing addresses, field visits, but it comes to about 107 accounts.
I'm sorry? The total amount?
Yeah, 107.
That I do not know.
About 100 times 107, about 10 times that much. Okay, so Ted, best to your ability, you certified all these people belong on this list, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for anybody?
What is the process, just quickly, about what you've done to contact these people to happen to know about a dozen of them?
Yeah, well, we send, send out certified knitters.
Okay, all right.
Send out certified knitters. If they ever call, it's, oh, go ahead and, you know.
So, unless their applications are wrong or something, they should have got a certified knitter?
They should have gotten a certified knitter.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do get the copy back. It's, it's gonna file along with all the paperwork.
It's my understanding that the way Charlie explained it on Tuesday, that the lien can be removed immediately if they come in and pay, is that correct?
Once, once the lien has been recorded, there's a release of the lien fee. But yeah, I would like it before it's recorded, if they come in and pay, I'll go ahead and remove the form so that it does not become recorded.
Okay, but once it's recorded, then you can just walk over and undo the lien, right?
Yes, there is a fee though.
Yeah. What is that fee?
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars, okay. Thank you.
And what is the date they have? Do you buy to avoid that $25 fee?
Well, I had it at the 10th, but since it hadn't been approved, it's not gonna be approved till today. I, I mean, if they, if I find that they have a payment, I've gone to the clerk's office and pulled out the paperwork to, for the lien to be filed. Yeah, so right up to the last minute.
In the last minute, is that Monday of next week? When are you planning to go do this?
What I'll do, well, I'm gonna get the forms right after I leave here and I'll forward them to Charlene. She'll, she'll sign them and then I'll take them to the clerk's office to re-record it.
Could we do that? Okay, thank you. Any further questions for Ted? Thanks, Ted. We really appreciate what you do for us. Can I get a motion to approve or disapprove the delinquent solid waste accounts?
I would approve.
Is the motion a second to approve the solid waste accounts, to have liens placed on them? Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say five, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. Regional Transportation Planning Organization Presentation, that's a long title there, Sarice. Road Safety Audit, I'm not done. Sarice Gravava from the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, welcome today. How are you today?
I'm doing good, thank you. So, like you said, my name is Sarice Gravava, I'm with the Southwest Council of Governments. I am the transportation planner there. I usually have a presentation, but I just briefly wanna go over basically what I do here in the Southwest region. I, and New Mexico Department of Transportation, which we refer to as NMDOT, basically is federally required to do planning. So, with this, they developed a Regional Transportation Planning Organization, RTPO, in each of the seven COG districts to basically include the rural areas for equity consideration during the planning process. So, with this, me as a RTPO, I act as a liaison between the local governments and the New Mexico Department of Transportation to enhance the transportation planning. I cover the four regions here in the Southwest, which is Captrun, Grant, Doggo, and Luna Counties. And basically, my duties as a RTPO is to solicit transportation projects, review, rank, and submit the projects to the DOT, provide data and technical assistance, and hold public and RTPO meetings on the transportation planning and the projects. So, two of the programs that I oversee for the New Mexico Department of Transportation is the TAP program and the RTP, which TAP stands for Transportation Alternatives Program. And basically, this program is awarded 5.5 million a year and the call for this program is every two years. And the RTP, which stands for Recreational Trails Program, is awarded 1.3 million a year and also called for projects every two years. So, both of these programs have a 14.5% match from the local governments. And in order to submit projects for these programs, you would contact myself and we would fill out a form and we would go over the projects with the District One, which is based out of Deming, and deem if these projects are feasible. And if so, then we can go ahead and apply for either of these programs to be awarded funding. So, that's just kind of a brief description on what's out there. One of the programs that we did have is the Highway Safety Improvement Program. And with this, the Village of Santa Clara went ahead and applied for a road safety audit study. And this was from Highway 152, which is Maple Street there in Santa Clara, all the way to the sidewalk there in Baird. So, this road safety audit was performed two years ago and we finally had the audit performed and we had countermeasures and suggestions on what can be done to improve the problems, which was pedestrian traffic along that highway. And that is what you have in your package, briefly the recommendations of what was on that road safety audit study. So, an update on the, on the road safety audit, which we refer to as the Copper Trails Project. So, right now, the NMDOT District One received a, an agreement with the Village of Santa Clara to, which states that the Village of Santa Clara will maintain the lighting and the maintenance on the pathway along Highway 180. So, right now, we're at the stage where the District One is making an application and getting a cost estimate to go ahead and submit to the Highway Safety Improvement Program Committee Board. So, hopefully, they can agree and award us some funding to go ahead and perform this project. And it will be fully funded if they go ahead and accept the application. So, this application, which they're looking at, is a path along 180 on the west side, which half will be sidewalk and half will be a path with lighting the whole way. Like I said, the district is working right now on the application to go ahead and submit it. And if they do approve it, we won't see any action until federal fiscal year 2020. So, that's basically where that's at. Is there any questions?
Thank you very much for all you do. I know we started working on this probably six years ago and it kind of got shut down because there's no monies. Then there was a death in that area, so we, we started looking at it more as a safety issue. And Mayor Vouch has, was very responsive when we got together and started talking about it again. And through your all's efforts, we got the, we got the highway department involved. As a matter of fact, Commissioner Edwards in a different hat was in a couple of our meetings when it came to trails over there in Santa Clara. And so, we are where we are now. And we're always asking, where did our discretionary monies go? Well, I believe it's $20,000 of my discretionary monies last year went to some of these studies. So, that's where some of our discretionary monies are used and what have yous. And, but thank you all very much for what you do. I haven't been involved in a couple of the meetings. I know that we had appointed Mr. Torrieta to, to trail. We haven't had a report for a while, but I'm sure he's working on something. I hope we could get something soon because we, we asked him to go ahead and put a comprehensive county plan for, for trails and bike trails throughout the county.
And with that trails, I'm sorry.
No, no problem.
The Town of Silver City did apply this last round for the recreational trails program and they were awarded and it's basically to redo the volunteer center parking lot, which is the trailhead for, our trails downtown. So, they were, yes, so they were visitor center, so they were awarded that and also kiosks and mappings, they were awarded that funding also. So, I mean, the trails program has really helped us here as far as trails in Silver City.
All right. Further questions?
So, Sarice, in working with you through Healthy Kids, Healthy Communities on this Copper Trails Project, it's my understanding that because of the road safety audit, that there are a number of different road safety audits that happen in the districts and that the district can choose one to fund themselves rather than asking for the community to come up with funding to do. And that's what happened with this one, correct?
No, not necessarily. Well, I guess yes, in a way.
If the funding's there, obviously.
If the funding's there, sure, they could go ahead and take whatever recommendations they would like and go ahead and pursue with that project. But what the village did is gonna head, they went ahead and spoke with the district, picked a project, and would rather have the Department of Transportation go ahead and fund that whole project.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was referring to. That the Department of Transportation is gonna pay rather than making the Village of Santa Clara fund TAP or RTP funding or something like that, correct?
Yes, and also like the Town of Silver City did a study in front of Walmart as far as the congestion there. And they're working with the district to go ahead and pick a project from those recommendations so the Department of Transportation can go ahead and fund that project as well.
Right, so I just wanna acknowledge that the Department of Transportation, we're really happy that the Department of Transportation picked that Copper Trails project to fund.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
on this Copper Trails Project, it's my understanding that, um, because of the road safety audit, that there are a number of different road safety audits that happen in the districts, and that the district can choose one to fund themselves rather than asking for the community to come up with funding to do. And that's what happened with this one, correct?
No, not necessarily. Um, well, I, I guess yes, in a way, um...
If the funding's there, obviously.
If the funding's there, sure, they could go ahead and take whatever recommendations they would like and go ahead and pursue with that project. But what the village did is go ahead, go, they went ahead and spoke with the district, picked a project, and would rather have the Department of Transportation go ahead and fund that whole project.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was referring to. That the Department of Transportation is gonna pay, rather than making the Village of Santa Clara find TAP or RTP funding or something like that, correct?
Yes, and also, like, the Town of Silver City did a study, um, in front of Walmart as far as the congestion there. And, um, they're working with the district to go ahead and pick a project from those recommendations, so the Department of Transportation can go ahead and, um, fund that project as well.
Right. So I just want to acknowledge that the Department of Transportation, we're really happy that the Department of Transportation picked that Copper Trails project to fund.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Further questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
All right, next item on the agenda is to approve or disapprove appointments to seven individuals to the Grant County Public Shooting Range. Uh, we get to choose these. I would suggest we pick three for three years for continuity, two for two years, and two for one year. And I believe I'll just start with Commissioner Edwards to go first, and we'll just go around the circle until we're out of people.
Wow. And as far as, uh, everyone on this list have similar preferences, they'd all not mind serving three years.
They, they all applied knowing it was potential for a three-year term.
Okay.
I would just go down the list and say Neil for three, Milo for three, John for three, Robert for two, Philip for two, Scott for two, and Sean for two.
So alphabetically?
Yeah, there'll have to be a one in there.
Two ones.
Two ones, yeah. So, one, one, two, two, three, three, so...
Be three, 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 two, two, one, one.
Yep. Yep. So Neil Ackerly, three, Milo Lambert, three, John Little, three, Robert Love, two, Philip Mickey, two, Scott Nielsen, one, Sean Reese, one.
Sucks to have a bad last name, I guess.
I have no objection to doing it that way. I have not adequate information to decide who. Should have more, who should have less. And with the fact that nobody else even put forth their name, I suspect that if someone who got one year wanted more, there wouldn't be a problem.
They'll reapply next year and get three more.
Absolutely. So I have no issues with that.
But we'll just appoint, we'll just do three.
At that point, they'll already be staggered, and they'll get three from then on.
Can we get a second?
I don't, I have no objection to doing that unless they want to, themselves, decide once themselves.
It's not there. We get to do this. We have to do this.
Okay. Are the ladies of the county, the, the community health?
I think we need to know who wants to serve a one year and who wants to serve a three year, but for expedience, he's saying, Mr. Chairman, let's go ahead.
Is that a second?
Yes.
There's a motion, a second, to approve Neil Ackerly, Milo Lambert, and John Little for a three-year term, Robert Love the second, Philip Mickey for two-year terms, Scott Nielsen and Sean Reese for a one-year term. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, the next item is a resolution, R 1718, authorizing and approving submission of a completed application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Finance Authority for bringing the roads in Wind Canyon and Fleming Tank County to county standards. We had a presentation on this by Misha on Tuesday. Does anyone have any questions? Otherwise, I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to approve Resolution Number R 17-18.
A second. There's a motion and a second to approve R 1718. Discussion on that motion.
I don't understand the timing.
They're already working, according to the gentleman, and now we're applying, and somebody want to tell me how that works?
One of the reasons that the timing for this particular project worked this way is many of the individuals indicated that they wanted to pay the levy in full, so there was no reason for us to borrow the entire $126,000 when we could borrow 42, with them agreeing to pay in full.
Now that you say it. There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve or disapprove Resolution R 1719? This is to approve a preliminary budget. Uh, everybody remember, we will have to revisit this in a couple of months and approve a final budget. Can I get a motion?
I approve, considering that we will be revisiting this.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve Resolution R 1719? Is there any discussion? Commissioner?
You anticipated that? Because on Tuesday, I said that I wanted to do this, uh, and I don't know if over the intervening two days, the rest of you have thought about this. I think, uh, in government, one of the worst things we can do when we're in bad times is to cut off potential for future revenues. And I feel that, uh, that's what we're doing by not fully, uh, filling the openings at the appraiser's office. This preliminary budget calls for a freeze on that. I understand it's temporary, that we can approve it. We may have a final version, uh, but it appears to me that there's plenty of money for that position, and that there's no reason to wait to start on looking for new revenue, new value that I know is out there, and it's not on the books and not being taxed. And I think the sooner we start with that, the better, fiscally, even though we have a tight budget.
Further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Nays?
It was not clear to me that anybody had, had answered that, but, so we are not, you're not suggesting a motion on my request, that I'm...
Well, we had a main motion.
...approving the preliminary budget as it was. And the answer to my question was that there was no additional support for that, for my position, is that correct?
I asked for further discussion, Commissioner. I saw her over there.
So, um, so my question is, if, um, I don't feel like at this moment that I have enough information to make a decision, and so does, if I want to support unfreezing this position, at what point in this process can that happen?
We will revisit this in its entirety within the next two months. Even if we added that position in there today, the only difference it would make is it would be sent to the state, and the state would have that information also. It would not be in the budget necessarily. It could also be taken out at that time.
So the position wouldn't, if we added, because if we unfroze the position, it wouldn't actually, we wouldn't actually hire the position until after the final budget was approved?
That would be up to the county manager, but I would assume that's how she would have it.
What was that, sorry?
That is the key point.
That was, I can't speak for what happened before I came here, but that has been my practice in my tenure as a county manager over the last 16 years, is that I always wait until I have a final budget before I fill positions that are up in the air or we make any decision based upon something significantly financial, such as, such as a recurring expenditure over and over. So my recommendation would be, yes, you would wait until you have a final budget approved to do the hiring.
I mean, we're kind of out of order here, this, this...
We are, it's true.
But just, just to know where I stand, I, I want to see what the revenues actually are. Um, I think if the assessor truly wants to prove to this board that that position is truly going to make a difference in revenue, what he should do is reassign, uh, some, some people, uh, resources, to really go out and find that new net value instead of reappraising old value, because we all know that doesn't do anything for the county coppers. Only new net value. And if he could show that in the next, uh, you know, two and a half, three months, it would go a long way to getting this board to vote for that.
Phil, thank you for allowing this out-of-order discussion. I think that's valuable.
Yeah. In the, in the last two years, though, he has been at nearly complete, uh, employment, and our revenues have dropped...
$163,000.
$163,060 in one year and nearly $100 in another. So, uh, reorganizing his forces to get that new net value in the next three months would go a long way to changing how the commission thinks at this time.
Given that discussion, I want to cast my support for this position, I'll vote aye.
Okay?
Aye.
Okay. So it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Bids and requests. Approve or disapprove bid B 1608, Santa Rita Volunteer Fire Station?
I approve.
Who? Who do you want to approve?
Oh.
Jim Boe?
Western Builders LLC.
There's a motion to approve Western Builders LLC, is there a second? You know, I'm gonna second that one, because that's in my district. Is there any discussion? I just want to say that this is six years in the making. This is another one of those things, and you guys that are new commissioners, never stop, have tenacity. We had to do land swaps, we had, this is just, it's been very hard to get this pulled off. And like I told you the other day, I think that, uh, a couple of you guys got another, another couple of stations that probably need to be built, and I won't be around to, to help you do that. But these, these risk management that we have now, they've figured this stuff out. So, uh, any further comments?
I'm gonna drop this cell phone off in Charlene's office. Not even Ben's gonna have my number. Unless he's gonna invite me for a cold beer. So, that being said, any, any further discussion?
Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very proud day. Good thing for Hanover, this station's actually in Hanover. Okay, at this time, I will take a motion to recess the Board of County Commissioners. All those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Call back to order the Grant County, or called to order the Grant County Healthcare Claims Board. Uh, one item on the agenda, approve or disapprove April 2017 Health Plan Claims in the amount of $8,078.12.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the April 2017 Health Plan Claims.
A second. There's a motion, a second, to approve the Health Plan Claims for $8,078.12. That all went to Heaton Regional Medical Center. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have an indigent burial to Terrazas Funeral Chapel's.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion, we approve the indigent burial for, from Terrazas Funeral Chapel's.
Second. There's a motion, a second, to approve the indigent burial from Terraz, for Terrazas. Any, uh, discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I would take a motion to adjourn the Grant County Healthcare Claims Board. All those in favor, signify, say an aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Call back to order the Board of Grant County Commissioners, and we will stand for elected officials' report, and the sheriff is sitting on the end, so he'll get to go first.
Chairman, Commissioners, uh, just wanted to go over our stats, our, uh, information for the sheriff's office. Stats from the month of April, um, and patrol included 643 calls for service. Uh, we did take 145 reports, and we investigated two motor vehicle collisions. And we also served 58 warrants for the month of April. In the stats from our Civil Crosses Division, we served 458 papers, which include DVOs, subpoenas, and RITs. Uh, we had 13 round trip transports to prisons and other facilities for a total of 6,156 miles. Currently, at the sheriff's office, we are preparing and planning for event, upcoming events, which include the Blues Festival, which is here pretty quick, and then the, the Pro Rodeo, which is at the end of the month. And then we also are planning, um, preparing for the high school graduations that are also here at the end of the month. The staff has been extremely busy, very proud of them for keeping up with the workload, uh, because we still are continuing to cover early on Santa Clara. So, um, I understand their budgets are, are as bad as ours, and they don't have the coverage, so we have been covering for them quite a bit. Um, currently, I am fully staffed, but like I have said in the past, I'm awaiting to hear back from three of my deputies that have applied to the New Mexico State Police for more money. Uh, they're still in the final stages of, of their backgrounds. And currently, I have staff that has been going through in-house training. Uh, we've been doing quite a bit of training in-house, trying to save on our budget and keeping our budget up, uh, as best as possible. I just want to thank the staff for everything that they do. I really appreciate what they do. This is an unfortunate appreciation week, and, um, we are holding a luncheon for them today, and, um, just to thank them for what they do and putting their lives on the line every day. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Commissioner Edwards?
Sheriff, thank you so much to you and your staff for the great job that you do. Um, could you please tell us what the difference is approximately between what we're paying deputies here and what State Patrol is paying?
I don't know if you want to know that.
I, I do.
They're actually making eight dollars more an hour than what a starting patrol deputy here is, their starting is about eight dollars an hour more.
And could you tell us what that is among the difference approximately?
Um, I, I can tell you what it is, but is this substantial amount?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Man.
Can you come through?
Yeah. I just, I think we need to be aware that that's, I, I, and actually, I think the state is, is caught in considerable issues to counties, um, by doing this, and, and, you know, is there a way that they can, if they're gonna pay that much more, um, you know, is there a way they can take responsibility for more of the patrol in this community?
We, we've been, uh, we do hold monthly meetings, um, between, uh, myself and the elect, I mean, myself and the chiefs of police through the community, and state police is also involved in these meetings. And from what they're saying is that because there's a need, they're gonna start, apparently, assigning more, more officers here, which I don't know how that's gonna benefit us. Um, we're hoping that it does help us, uh, but still, it's, makes it a challenge when they're stealing from us to, to, you know, help, so, yes.
Thank you.
I was gonna actually ask about what you just said. I ran into maybe a dozen state police officers down to Adobe Springs yesterday, and they stopped me on my way in, and, and were very, uh, some of them were very jubilant that they were getting, and there was three or four of our deputies, um, and they pointed out sympathy with the deputies that they were not getting paid enough here. I also wanted to, um, point out that, I think this last commission meeting, I asked you about, um, some of those supplies, that, um, equipment that your deputies supply for themselves, and you talked about firearms, but later I got, uh, an extensive list from one of your sheriff's deputies of things that they, I don't know if it's extensive money-wise, but there was quite a list of, of items that they provided themselves. I know we're in a budget crunch, but, um, so I guess I have some concerns about, uh, your pay, and, and I was gonna, I was gonna ask you about, if you knew about, because they also, the, the state police officers also talked about their increased presence in Grant County, and I was gonna ask you how that was going to affect, um, your, your, our need for certain, the need for county to provide those services if the state police is gonna increase their presence. Do you have any further opinion on that?
Look, what I do, the, the way the, the state police operates in Grant County is they assist us mainly with traffic, that's it. If we're extremely busy and we're backed up, then we can ask them to help us answer calls, but other than that, if, if we're not, if we're being able to keep up with their workload, all they do is go out and enforce traffic on the, on the state highways, which is a big help to us, but, um, as far as answering calls and dealing with, uh, everything that we do, that we're obligated to do, um, it's, all you're gonna see is more black and white cars out there running the highways, and we're still gonna be shorthanded and dealing with the, the high, high calls and high volume of calls and stuff like that, if we're keeping up with it. But, I mean, I do appreciate them wanting to bring more officers over here, but I would like them, and if they would step up and help us cover these little municipalities when we're extremely busy and, and stuff, you know, it's, it's a challenge. Um, that's something that we try and work on every month, that we have meetings with them, we, we brief them on what's going on in our community, where we could use extra help, and, uh, they do step up sometimes, but like I say, sometimes it, it just doesn't help us, and, and, you know, losing the people to them. I do lose good quality people to them, so, because they're trained through handling everything and then going and working traffic, it's a big difference for them. They hire certified from us because they're trained to do everything that we needed to use them. I think we all have same feeling. Our police force right now, and, uh, I think in a perfect world, we'd love to give them all raises. Um, unfortunately, a budget is a budget, we gotta stick to it. I did like that you did volunteer to utilize one of the positions in order to...
I did like that you did volunteer to utilize one of the positions in order to spread out some of that money and try to give them a little more funds to their take-home pay. So, I really do appreciate that. So, that says a lot about you, and that's what I wanted to see since we started this conversation way back when. And I think when we see you do your part, we want to do ours at the same time. So, thank you for suggesting that during our budget hearings.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramos, but I do also, I believe we need to take care of what we have, and I'm willing to do whatever it takes, you know, I know these guys are extremely busy, but I try and do the best that I can with the budget that I have and provide them the best tools possible to do their job, because our main mission is public safety, and we're here for the community, and we want the community to be able to feel safe and be able to go out and enjoy this beautiful community that we have. And as long as I have a good staff and keep my staff, that'll continue to happen. So, thank you for that, and I will do whatever I can to, you know, to help with the budget and start making adjustments in my office to move people around or even hold positions to be able to help keep my staff that I have, you know, even equipment-wise and stuff like that, we'll do whatever it takes. So, but I do appreciate the support you guys can give us, and we'll keep going forward from there.
So, I have two more questions. First one is, can you tell us how many deputies you've lost to the State Patrol?
To the state police, I've lost one, but like I say, it's not just them, there are other agencies that have gone to Las Cruces, I've lost two, a few to Las Cruces to the state, and a total of four that I've lost within the last few, within the last year. And, you know, it's unfortunate that I lose them to other agencies, but then the municipalities come to us, so we're, we're doing the same thing, you know, we're recruiting the municipal officers to come work for the county, you know, which we do pay more than municipalities, so it's just a chain reaction, but...
It's a catch-22.
Yes, so that's pretty much why we're covering for them, because I'm stealing from them too.
So, is it feasible to hand over all of the patrolling state highways in Grant County to the State Patrol to alleviate the pressure on your deputies for them to be able to handle other calls?
It is, it is. We rarely work the highways anymore, because my guys are responding to all the calls, so we're minimally working traffic on the highways. That's why we don't do very much traffic on the highways. The only traffic that we're mainly doing is gonna be when we're working on Storm Guarding Grant or a safer New Mexico Grant, is when we're out there enforcing traffic. Other than that, we're pretty much just answering calls. So, the state police has picked up the traffic, as you've seen them, I've seen them out there just sitting on the highway waiting for somebody, so, but that's really the main function that they have here in Grant County right now.
So, four deputies in the last year to the State Patrol?
No.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yes.
One plus, and there's next three, okay, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Brown?
I was somewhat concerned by the comparison between sheriff wages and state police wages, and you called it a catch-22, and to me, it's more like normal feeding chain of life. Right? The big guys eat the little guys, and, so I guess, two questions, one sort of a technical question, when you compare the salaries and you came up with an eight dollar an hour difference, did that take into account the difference in benefit packages?
Yes. Actually, in talking to, I lost one of the deputies to state police, and he talks to, you know, now that he's there, he talks to my guys and tells them a lot about what benefits they have and stuff. There are certain things that are different, and they're just trying to recruit my people, you know, and he left, and now he talks to them, but there are differences in their benefits.
Does the state police pay 100% of health?
No, they don't. They do not pay 100%, and I think they're, that's the only difference that they have, they have the same exact retirement plan as we do, but the insurance is a big thing. Also, my staff, my guys do not pay them to Social Security, and the state police does, so that's a difference. FICA, I think is what it's called, right?
Yeah, FICA, right.
And so, that's a difference. So, they see, you know, like I tell them, the grass is greener on the other side, you know, there's always, you gotta weigh things out and that, but as far as equipment, anything the state police has to offer, everything is issued to them. They don't have to buy anything for themselves.
Okay.
That's a big benefit too. They drive, they're changing their units out, a hundred thousand miles, they get a new car or a better car, you know, my guys are driving these cars over 150,000. So, they see these things, and that's what attracts them, the money, just a dollar. Dollar, you can compare apples to oranges, a dollar, when you're close to retirement, you want the higher dollar than the lower dollar, because you're close to retirement, you wanna retire the higher wage.
So, I think my point, apart from the fact that we have generous benefits package that I think is attractive to many, I think my bigger point is that this is just a natural feature of our economy, right?
Right.
At the public schools, we don't attempt to compete with universities for salaries.
Right.
I suspect the state police doesn't compete with the FBI, although obviously, I don't know that. There's just a natural progression. So, as sheriff, is your goal to match the state police?
No, my goal is not to match a bigger, I mean, they have a lot more to do, more area to cover, more, they're a bigger agency, I can't compare our agency to theirs, just like APD right now is in a battle with state police, because state police is stealing APD officers, which is Albuquerque Police Department, so they're, they're in competition because they're pretty much of equal size. They can compare each other, but I can't compare them. But I, like I tell my staff, I do not hold it against anybody that wants to better themselves, you know, make more money and, you know, have better things, but I cannot compare myself to them. All I want is for them to be able to be, be able to enjoy their life here in Grant County. They understand they cannot make what the state police make. I just want to show them that we do appreciate them and want to keep them here, because there are lots that I want to do that. You know, when I first started 25 years ago, or 21 years ago with Grant County, Grant County was the highest-paid agency here locally in Grant County. Now, as Silver City PD is making more than our guys. So, that's where they see that. You know, they don't, it's just a change.
And that's a more relevant comparison to me. If we were losing folks to, you know, to Loma County Sheriff, that would, that would make more of an impression on me than losing them to the state police.
Right.
All right, thank you very much for the discussion.
Yes, thank you.
For the discussion, any other questions?
Thanks, Sheriff. I do appreciate everything you do for us, and I really get the part of the last five years having those salaries up higher, because that means a big difference to their retirement check, I got that.
Mr. Assessor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, Attorney. I would just like to start off with, I do understand about the budget, I've actually read the whole budget, and we actually dissected, and I do thank the new commissioners giving the effort about the frozen position that I have at this moment. We're doing, we are spending a lot of time training in that office, I do have a very new staff, and matter of fact, they're doing online training at this moment with the International Association of Assessing Officers, and yes, I will throw you some numbers within the next month on how we're going to actually increase revenue. And that's by putting stuff that's on the books that has not been on the books, and I think it's, like I said, I'm barely getting out of the starting blocks. I was led through the very disaster of an office, and I actually put it back together thanks to my employees that are there. We just got done with the protest period, and that proves a lot of what's going on on our values. We are caught with 3% cap, we can't increase values more than 3% cap on the residential site. I did send an email to all the Commissioners, did you guys have an opportunity to read that?
Yes, I did, thank you, it was very...
There's information.
Did you, because I was gonna read it for the records, but if I, you want me to waive that for the records, or I can just get it over to the county clerks?
I think we already, I responded to Denise and thanking her for...
Thank you so much for that response, and that was very professional, I appreciate that response, thank you so much. So, I'm gonna go ahead and waive it now that you guys have read that, but I will get it on over to the county clerk, so they can have it into the minutes itself.
And also, you guys, I'll email it to you guys.
I know, I know we're in rough times, we do, we need to go out there, do our job, do our reviews, and I'm already in the process of running on this reappraisal. This reappraisal is gonna start off immediately, and I will put a little, I will put a lot of this protest on the side, and I'll probably handle the majority myself, so I can have actually people out in the field. I'm also gonna send you some information about the yield control formula, what is net new, and what is valuation maintenance. And you are right, Mr. Chairman, that a lot of the valuation maintenance is not actually help out on the revenue source. However, it does help out fluctuate, you know, pretty much balances out the rate itself. I do thank my staff, I'm, I, we're really busy at this moment with, like I said, finishing the protest, and we are gonna be sending some more training. And I do have sat in the Economic Development Infrastructure Policy Committee, and we actually spoke about bringing in value, we spoke about what's our next step for these tiny homes, so there's a lot that's gonna be brought up, or actually be put on the books. I thank you for at least looking in about the budget and in our office, and in June 15th, I will have some solid numbers from the assessor's office on valuation maintenance and net new. I do not have control over Copper Production Tax Act, and I can understand where the $150,000 on property taxes where it's broken down. I don't have control over the state assessed property under Property Tax Division, we still don't have a cabinet secretary, we still don't have a director from Property Tax Division, and I played a very important part to create that. Matter of fact, we were almost with a director, he's an attorney, and he actually, he actually did not turn down the position for Property Tax Division. I also had some conversations with the governor, speaking about the state assessed properties, and due to the state assessed properties, there's three vacancies at this moment at Property Tax Division, I have no control over that. The interesting thing is, it's a self-rendering state, and one of our major priorities that we're gonna be talking about is see if there's any way possible we could become a full disclosure law here in the state of New Mexico. That is a very, very important issue. Here's another thing that we're gonna be working on, and I'm gonna tell you, it is very alarming, and it's about the special method of valuation. I've actually spoke with Commissioners about the special method of valuation, that is agricultural grazing, and that is gonna be looked at for the year 2018. Once again, June 15th, we'll have the solid numbers for my, sending it to the Department of Finance and Administration. I stand for any questions?
You said you were looking at agriculture and grazing, would you be a little more specific?
Now, to be specific, we're actually going into what the liens, excuse me, the, the, not only the permitting, but the leases on a lot of these properties, and I will have a breakdown of what's going on, and I would like to speak to you personally on what's going on back. We're just partly, we're just barely putting it all together on what we're gonna work on. And it's gonna be one of the biggest tasks that I have in this, in this county, but I will get with you specifically on that, once I put this plan together. And Commissioner Ramos, thank you for bringing up about the report on the hikes, I mean, on the trails with Cinderola Corre, and I'm doing with the CDT, I'm doing with the Grant County Trails, and I will give you a report for, for that.
I really do appreciate your report, it was very professional this morning, although I heard on the radio this morning something that really bothered me, saying that our county was really top-heavy and that we should be keeping your jobs, and, you know, giving your positions. That kind of work, or that kind of talk out there is not good. I liked the professionalism you showed today.
Yes, sir.
But this kind of stuff that's going on the radio?
Yes, sir.
I tell you what, buddy, that's gotta stop.
Um, my...
If you've got a very good way of, of bringing in more revenue for us, or any other ideas so that we can keep and hopefully create more jobs in the future, please bring that to us, because it's really easy to be on the other side saying what you want to on radio. But, reality is reality. We as Commissioners have very, very tough duties here to make sure that our budgets are within our means. And it's just like running a household, we don't go overspending before we pay our bills. So, I just want to bring that up.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and my name is Raul Torrieta, it is not funny for starters, and you know what, I was asked to speak about the budget.
My honor.
Not a problem, it's okay, and the professionalism that I would like to show with you, and I would like to sit down and talk to you about that, without a problem. I have, like I said, looked at the budget, and I understand, you know, I run my household just like the rest of you, you know, I have to stick in a certain budget, I got mortgages, I understand that. However, the bottom line is, is a lot of the individuals that are working are at the $13 an hour job, they're doing a lot of the work. And I do say, in my office, they are working diligently, we actually have brought on more accounts for the personal property, and on that economic development meeting, we actually spoke about personal property, we did speak about the budget, and we are gonna, we are gonna try for the full disclosure. But, if I offended any of you, I apologize, but I'm just letting you know, I am going to express some concerns, and I just want to keep the public informed.
Thanks.
And hopefully, it's the facts. Thank you very much.
Yeah, hopefully. Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
Chairman, members of the board, I don't know what to say, my, I know that my comments were misconstrued a while back, when I, we were talking about the plan for setting up the, I don't know, what was it called, the, where we fit everybody into classifications, and I expressed that I did not support a plan that allowed for department heads to be paid more than the elected officials, and that may be what the assessor is referring to, that there are department heads that are considerably paid considerably more than the elected officials, and you guys are the ones that set those wages for us. It was not, I was not talking about my wages particularly, that I was concerned in increasing, because I have no say in that, that's, that's your say. I was concerned about my employees in my office. I tried to bring to you guys information about exactly what they do, and to no avail, they were still slotted in class 18 versus slot 27 for a semi-comparable position that fits under the manager's office. And, you know, it's been a struggle to get things going, to motivate my employees, when they have been shown the kind of, not necessarily disrespect, but not given consideration for what they do, okay? And, I mean, I, I was not intending to say any of this at this time, but it's to the point where, you know, I told my girls this morning, you know, we, I need to consider whether you guys should continue assisting the position that is considered higher than you guys, when you're, you're doing a lot of these receipts, a lot of the work, and Teddy is not one to complain, he's not gonna say, hey, I'm, you're overloading me, he just plugs away and keeps going. This gentleman has lost weeks, if not months, of vacation time and sick leave, because he doesn't dare take time off, because he's concerned about his department. He's, he's concerned about getting things done, every time he leaves, it doesn't close down. Our girls step up, they go and take the payments. When he's sick, we open the department, we take care of it. But that's just, you know, just for your information, okay? I mean, our, my suggestion was, well, maybe we should just go to the county manager and say, it's your department, you manage, you figure out how Ted's gonna have a break for lunch, you figure out how he's gonna take... for lunch, you figure out how he's going to take vacations, so. But, you know, we discussed it amongst ourselves, and we said, you know what? Let's not do that. Let's continue working, no matter how, what consideration or lack thereof that we have received, we will continue doing, trying to be the better person, to do what we have to do. But, you know, I mean, the assessor's entitled to his opinion. I also am entitled to my opinion. I do feel that there has been some disparity, and, and that maybe we are, if you really looked at it, I mean, I haven't looked at it, maybe we are a little top-heavy. I don't know. But never through this. I was also asked at the budget hearing that I attended, to explain the discrepancy by the county manager. Well, I don't know if you guys are aware, the report that I give you every month, that I come in and give you the report, is for the current taxes, which starts in November. From November to the date that is put on there, I give you what we've collected and what remains outstanding. It's for November through the current month. It's not fiscal year. The very bottom line is what we have collected for the fiscal year, year-to-date, because that's the way the report runs. The other report goes with the current tax period, not the fiscal year period. So we have collected $5,263,086.26 since November till now, to May 17th. Closed the business yesterday. From the prior month, from the last report, on the 19th of April, we collected a total of $1,236,657.1 for the county, and an additional $1,898,311.77 for the other authorities that we collect for. I don't know if, if, you know, I, when I gave this report to Linda earlier, she was asking me where these numbers come from. It's all in the authorities' report that goes by fiscal year. That's all the documentation is there. If you ever have any questions, you know, I'd be glad, more than glad to explain to you or show you what I do and how I do it. So, you know, I did offer in my, although I didn't say it publicly or whatever, but I did offer in my explanation on the budget hearing, one item, similar to what the assessor is, is talking about and referring to, to Mr. Bennett. But mine isn't, it has nothing to do with grazing or agriculture. My suggestion is that there is a state statute that allows the county commission, when there is a tax bill that is currently under $5, that we assess a fee to raise that tax bill to $5 minimum. I mean, I have asked the treasurer's affiliate if we can go to the legislature and have that increased to $10, at least, if not more, but $5 is still $5.
Does that take legislation?
To get from 5 to 10?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it is a statute that allows.
Are you charging the 5?
We're not, we're, if we have, if we have a 7-cent tax bill, that's what we send, 7 cents. And that's what some people pay.
I don't have a problem with a minimum on a bill.
Yeah, I don't either.
So, I mean, that's, it's just called an administrative fee, that by resolution, the commission would pass, and it's, I believe it's part of the, I'm not sure of what, where the process to actually begin, whether it's with the assessment numbers, or if it's, you know, after the fact, once the tax levies are set in the state. I'm not sure where that goes. It just, the, the statute doesn't say where, when and where. It just says that you have the authority to, to assess that administrative fee, and, and the estimate.
Every?
No, that's any, any tax bill that's under $5. I mean, and I wasn't, it wasn't the intent to say, well, but, but when we, we tried, I tried to get with the assessor to see how many accounts fall in that, and there was no way that his statistics or my statistics can come up with. I can do it when, once we get the tax roll. Immediately after I get the tax roll, I can run the report of how many tax bills we have pending that are under $5, and that's the only time I can give you an exact.
When is that?
First of November.
So, I don't really know how much revenue that would, would generate. But I do agree that there shouldn't be a tax bill less than $5.
Yeah. Well, my best guess, as I stated in the paperwork that I gave you, is that there's approximately 45,000 accounts that pay under $5, and the majority are under $1. So I projected about a 4, $4.50 addition.
Which would give us about that money anyway, so.
It would give us $20,000 at least, minimum. I mean, that's just, like I say, and I, I was not, I was, I was trying to get a hold of the people at Tyler to see if there was some way we could go retroactively back, and they said, no, that this is the only time you can get the specific numbers, is when you have, soon as you get the tax roll.
What does that need to be passed to get it on the next tax bills?
Well, I, like, that's what I'm saying. I, I'm not sure.
Before July?
I'm not sure if it has to be done before July, or if you can actually do it. The statute does not clear. It does not say.
Just like all the rest of them.
Yep. So, I mean, that's just a recommendation that, you know, that we do look into it. I've tried to cough some of the other treasures, and they say, well, we, we have a mixed, you know, concern about that. And, and some of it is that they're concerned that the people that have grazing are going to be affected, being affected negatively. And they say, well, you're looking at, you know, who can't pay $5? It costs you more to print that bill than.
You're paying whoever needs to pay those expenses.
Right.
If we're not generating enough on a bill to pay for the paper that's put on, that's just not, that doesn't make sense. So, so I, I, with y'all's, we direct the management to look at that. Yeah, can you send the statute to Abby?
Yeah. Well, I gave it to you guys in the packet that I had, but I'll, I'll give it to Abby.
So, do you want to go over your, do you have anything else to say about this? We're about 88% collected, is that what I got there?
89.5% for the 2016 taxing.
She was just saying that, she just mentioned that ends June 30th.
Okay. Also, as you guys are aware, Tuesday morning, we were having a, we weren't, the state of New Mexico is conducting a land sale, delinquent tax account sale at the Veterans Memorial Business and Conference Center. And we had 21 properties that were sold. They generated $45,500. The taxes are $15,862.84. So the state is holding $29,637.16 that they haven't had before, so.
But they send that to the owner?
To what?
They send that back to?
No, they don't. That's their, that's their portion of the, I mean, yeah, those that were sold for more than the minimum bid, the, the, the state gets their portion of penalty and interest.
Right.
But then, the, the owner does get whatever, well, the balance. The balance, yeah. So, and, and they're the ones that know what those figures are. I don't, I got that.
Where can someone use those properties that were sold?
Right now, the, the tax, Property Tax Division has that. We've been bombarded with calls asking us, what, what did this one sell for? You know, and, and really, until they finish their process, and unfortunately, because it is a state agency, they have up to six weeks or so to, they have to record the sale with a county clerk. However, I don't know how long it's, it usually takes them quite a while, because they have issued deeds and so on and so forth. We don't have any record of who bought what, or anything like that.
Okay. I just had a question.
Which can tell you which property sold, and for how much it sold for, but that's the extent of our, our information.
Okay. I just had a question from somebody who wants to know who their new neighbor was, and they think the property sold. Thank you.
We try to answer those questions as they come in to the office, and as best we can, but at the same time, before it becomes, you know, if you want to say, public record, we kind of hesitate, because we don't want to give misinformation, or until the deed's recorded, and they, it's an official thing that they've done, it's kind of hard. And there is a two-year, I believe it's two-year right of redemption, that the property owners have, where they can come back, and it costs them extra, because they have to go to the district court to, if they have a basis for claiming why they weren't able to, you know, redeem.
Yeah, and that two-year right of redemption isn't standard in the other states. Is that right? Do you know what the other states do? I think that's a big problem with New Mexico's tax sale, from what some of my real estate people are telling me, is that people won't buy these lands, because they know that they have, they'll lose it within the next year. So it's not like you can buy a piece of property through this sale and then do anything with it, because the original owners might get it back, so.
You gotta hold on to it for two years.
You gotta basically hold on for, for two years.
Yeah, or there, there is a process that they can go through. It's, it's called quieting the title.
Okay, right.
If they just go through the process, they can.
But that, that could be rather expensive, I've been told.
You have to do the advertising.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Steve. Good job. Oh, I'm sorry. Over in this direction. And this might be for Linda or Charlene as well. You know, I'm still trying to figure out where all these things come together. So I've got a, a budget report, which includes actuals for the current year, and I've got your report. And I guess let me start by saying, out of the 89, you're up to 89.05% of total. Do you, what do you expect to get to? You don't expect to get to 100, right? We almost never get that.
Almost never, for the current year.
So what do you, what percentage do you think we will get to this year?
This year, I'm hoping to get at least to 92, but for the current year. Overall, see, that's, that's where the thinking gets kind of a little offline, because when we look at these reports, it, it also has a 10-year average. This is considered a 10-year report. And, and that, right now, on this, this report, for this time around, we're at 95.86 overall.
On the 10-year?
On the 10.
And there was a two-year on that report as well, as I recall.
On the wedding?
Was there not a two-year column, as well as a 10-year?
Well, it has a breakdown for each year. 2016, 20, 20, like, two years, from two years ago is 93.9, all the way back to the, to 2006, which is at 99.99. So that's where the 95.86 average comes out to be.
Okay. So, so that's helpful. A realistic estimate for current year collections, you think 92%.
I hope.
Okay. And so then, at least, my next question, which is, if we look at the, the bottom line here, we've collected so far 4.6 million for the general fund, right? I'm not counting the debt service. Where do I see that? Is, is that the entirety of the current property taxes figure in the budget?
No, I, if I understand correctly, Steve, that would include the current property, the delinquent, and the interest and penalties? Is this all part of this figure? So it's broken down into those line items?
See, just the first three line items there. Current property taxes, delinquent taxes, interest penalty?
It's, it's not really, see, I mean, I don't know what, the numbers that she has are probably not, because, are you looking at fiscal year? See, this is, this is fiscal year, this is tax year. Tax year starts in November, okay? This ends in June. Starts July 1st through June. So you're going to have a discrepancy there.
Are you saying your tax year, your tax year goes through the end of September? When you say tax year starts in November.
To the?
I'm sorry, I missed it, my, October. That happens to be my birthday month, but.
We send the tax bill in November. That's when we bill. That's when this, the time clock on this starts, and we keep reporting to you.
Just, just so we can move on, is it not true that it's a very small percentage of people who pay between July 1 and October 31?
Oh, yeah.
Very small, right?
Yes.
So we're almost looking at the same thing? Really close?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I just want to get past the date problem. So if this figure includes delinquent taxes, then that means it includes things that, that aren't part of 2016 property taxes. So I'm, I'm a little confused about that. I don't think it could include delinquent taxes, if it's what it says it is. And I don't think it could include interest and penalties. So I'm hoping it's just that first line in the budget.
Well, that's a question for Steve, because I don't know if he's, how he's calculating his property taxes.
Right, that makes sense.
Another thing, though, Steve, when you're reporting that, are your imports into Tyler current domain, unless on the report?
No, that's, and that's what I was trying to explain, that the other, the other difference is, when I get these reports, I take the report, like, I, I ran this report this morning, before the meeting. So it would be up through close of day yesterday. Okay? What she has here is only what's been uploaded through April. Because.
Maybe, something like that, yeah.
Well, the thing is, is that the treasurer runs on a different software, and so he has to do a manual import from his software into our software. So the numbers are not going to be the same if it's not daily. So even though I may have run the report in May, it may only show collections through April 30th, April 24th, just depending on the last day of their imports.
As far as working things together, it's, and when we first got here, and they were just moving, transitioning to the current software, it was totally separate stuff. There was no way to even move things filed back and forth, so. All right. Well, thank you for the historical perspective. You talked about glossing over, though, for me, I was like, how do y'all even?
I look forward to saying the same thing in four more years. It's better now than when I started.
Yeah, it's remarkable that you're able to do very accurate budgeting at all in that situation, but.
Chairman, members of the board, basically, we want to say for the record, when I got here, we had a shambles. Nothing balanced, nothing, none of the accounts were correct for the last seven and a half years. I've tried to get everything. I've worked a lot with Linda. We've butted heads back and forth, and, you know, trying to understand each other as to what, where the numbers are coming from. And, and I'm glad to report that right now, every bank account that I have is in balance with the bank statements, what I passed along to Linda. We're, we're, we will never balance 100%, because that, the, the finance department does not export the expenditures to our department, so we have no clue. We, we record revenues, and we've got that in, in everything, but like I said, all the bank statements are all in balance, and we're, the last two years, our audits have been very good. Linda McGee has stated how that the last two years have been the best in the last 12 years that they have found, and we, we hope to continue that, and, and I don't see why there would be any difference. And it has been, you know, Linda and I, you know, we joke with each other about, you know, what, what you're talking about, what I'm talking about, and, and you have your idea, I have my idea, and somewhere in the middle is the truth, or the facts, or whatever. But we don't, we don't, we can disagree without being disagreeable, and we can talk to each other, and we get the job done. And like I said, right now, we are, I mean, if, if you have any questions, in any And like I say, right now, we are, I mean, if you have any questions at any time, anybody, you can come into my office and I'll show you exactly how this process works and, I mean, it's the tools that we have to do what we have. And so like I say, we are imbalanced the last, you know.
No, I wasn't asking anything about, I was just trying to understand how these two fit together.
I have a better idea. I thank you for working together. Hopefully, it's more pleasant than headbutting sounds, but I look forward to further progress. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Steve. I will concur with Steve's remarks. Six years ago, it was a mess. Madam clerk? No report. Madam manager? No report. Well, I started over here last time. You want me to do it again?
No, help me with this.
I'll start over there again.
Sure.
Commissioner Edwards?
So first of all, first of all, I'd like to say that Commissioner Billings deserves full credit for the meeting on Tuesday night. I was just a helper. It was his idea and he put it together, and so I just want to acknowledge that publicly. Thank you for doing that. I'd like to start by thanking all the people who shared their thoughts and feelings about the cancer center in the public meeting on Tuesday evening. It was one of the most emotional evenings I have ever spent, and I am in awe of your courage. I would also like it noted for the record that not a single trustee made it a priority to attend the meeting. It's hard to know where to start when talking about the challenges we're facing with the hospital, and there's so much to talk about, I could literally be up here all day. Since the cancer center seems to be front and center of the long list at the moment, that's where I'll start. I subscribe to the idea that if there's nothing to hide, there's no reason not to be completely transparent. So with that in mind, I invite the GRMC Board of Trustees to demonstrate to the commission and to the public, there is nothing to hide, by being completely transparent on the following issues. First, make available to the general public a copy of the Cancer Center RFP, unredacted copies of the two proposals, the score sheets used to evaluate them, along with a list of the selection committee members. The public is owed a thorough explanation of exactly how UNM could score higher than NMCC in an unbiased review of the proposals. If there is nothing to hide, then making these documents and explanations available will not affect contract negotiations or the appeals process. Second, make public a copy of GRMC's procurement policy and demonstrate to the public that the policy was followed in the Cancer Center RFP process. Third, make public a copy of the regulations that made the RFP process necessary at this particular time. I'm referring specifically to Mr. Ontivera's statement in the Tuesday commission meeting that regulation prohibited further negotiation with NMCC. Fourth, make public the history of GRMC's contractual relationship with NMCC. Last, but certainly not least, explain to the public why tying the most viable value line at our hospital to the complete and unmitigated disaster that is our state budget is a sound business decision made with the best interests of this community in mind. I have read both proposals, and I would like to read to you from both proposals. The mission of the UNM Comprehensive Cancer Center is to provide and deliver the highest quality, state-of-the-art, comprehensive cancer diagnosis and treatment for all New Mexicans. At the University of New Mexico Comprehensive Cancer Center, multidisciplinary teams of cancer physicians and surgeons work together with nurses, pharmacists, and staff to develop the most effective treatment plan for each of our patients. The mission statement for NMCC is, our vision is to be your strongest ally to conquer cancer. We are a team that is passionate about healing. We deliver the kindness you want and the excellence you expect with the dignity you deserve. Together, we are New Mexico Cancer Center. I was gonna read more, but I was advised that Abby might fall out of her chair if I went any farther. So I will tell you that these documents are available. If you want to look at them, email me, I'll send them to you. This missions, these two mission statements represent two very different philosophies in cancer care. One is to be treated by a research hospital where you are a subject. The other is a small practice where you are personally. Right now, we have that choice, and I know people who choose the research hospital route, and that is their prerogative if they can afford it. They can go to MD Anderson, our Mayo Clinic, or UNM. If UNM takes over our cancer center, the Board of Trustees will have taken that choice away from this community without asking. And if you were present at Tuesday's meeting, I think it would give you a good idea of what the majority of people in this community are really after. Wikipedia's first definition of trustee is a legal term in which its broadest sense can refer to any person who holds property, authority, or a position of trust and responsibility for another person. By virtue of being appointed trustee, each member of the Board of Trustees has been entrusted with the health and well-being of this hospital, which in turn is vital to the health and well-being of this community. In reviewing the cancer center debacle, it would appear that the Board of Trustees has grossly disrespected the very people they have been entrusted to serve and depend on to be in business, patients and the medical staff that serve them. In fact, it was mentioned on Tuesday evening that the Medical Executive Committee had a unanimous vote of no confidence on the UNM contract, and I believe the public has certainly demonstrated their massive vote of no confidence as well. Perhaps it is time for the commission to consider doing the same. So now what? The only way to hold the Board of Trustees accountable is to demand that they do so. That is done by attending commission meetings, Board of Trustees meetings, writing letters, deeply investigating their practices and procedures, applying to be on the Board of Trustees, making your voices heard in any way possible, and never letting up until things change. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is that enough? I had a clue that Elise was gonna have a lot of really good questions, and that's why I wanted to go second. And Elise, you alluded to the fact that the way to be accountable is to answer these questions in public, and you mentioned that none of the trustees showed up, and Commissioner Billings mentioned that some of them had good reasons, but we don't know about a number of them. And I also think it might be a little much to expect them to come to an informal information session such as we had on Tuesday, especially when the odds were they would be faced with a hostile crowd. So I think what we should do, to be fair, and to help answer some of those questions, which I have also, is to hold a special meeting. And I'm asking for a special meeting because we don't have time to wait for our next regular meeting. Special meeting with the full commission, asking that the people that we appointed comment, report to us on what's going on and answer those questions. Why was there a need to issue an RFP now? Is it true that there really never had been one before? Because I believe that's been reported two different ways, right? Give them a chance to answer some of these questions that we all have. I think many of us inclined to see the answers as worst that they might be, and we deserve to think differently if, in fact, the answers are better. So knowing that either the chair or a majority of this body can call a special meeting, that's what I would like to propose. And I suggest that we each do our comments, maybe that'll give us a chance to react to that idea, and then we can, we can make that motion, actually doesn't even have to be a motion, does not have to be a formal action of the commission.
It couldn't be.
Right, exactly. It's not a formal action to call a special meeting. That's something I've checked with the Attorney General's Compliance Guide for the OMA. Anyway, that's why I wanted to follow you, because I think we have a fact-finding portion of our, of our mission, and I think we have an accountability requirement of our mission, and we need to demand accountability. I want to turn briefly from the hospital to the cap entity. As you know, it's in my habit to mention this, and will we be getting a report from you, Commissioner Oma?
I really didn't have much to report, being that it's always on cats. Anybody that really wants to see this can always get on cats and see the whole meeting verbatim and take as long as they want to see this. That's why I usually don't report on the cap entity. But, you know, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay, and that's totally fine. What I heard about the last meeting confused me greatly. I heard a new idea floated, well, by a couple people, that there would not, in fact, be a diversion project at all. And as you know, that makes me happy. But what was suggested was that somehow, New Mexico would convert a decision to not use the water exchange rights granted to it by the AWSA into money. And I don't know how that works without a modification to the Arizona Water Settlements Act, which would be a long process. And so what I concluded, as I thought about this over the weeks, was that this seems to be a full employment idea for Pete Domenici Jr.'s law firm. The questions it raises are so huge, and the legal and political expertise it would require are so tremendous, that it sounded to me like years before we'd be seeing this. And then, of course, it raised the question, who gets that money? That they're talking about somehow working out of a decision not to use the water that we could get in exchange for. Well, the cap entity wants it, the ISC wants it, they both have a claim on it. How's that gonna end up working out? And is that what we as a commission want to have happen with the, what's commonly termed sixty-six million, but is more like eighty to ninety million after interest, in the federal money that's available for projects that I think we as a commission feel are more important than the possibility of a future stream of income from not leveraging water? So all of that really is in the category of a lot more questions and concerns as well. And I think we owe it to ourselves to have an expert tell us what are our options as a commission. We have one seat on this cap entity, we've got it because we claim that we really want to be a part of this process. We need to understand what this process is at this point, because it's, it's a mystery to me. And so I would love to work with you and with anybody else who's interested to get an expert here to tell us what's going on and what are our options as a commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Billings. I want to thank Elise and Harry for their remarks about the hospital. Now you know why I asked Elise to partner with me on the meeting we had, the two and a half hour meeting we had the other day. Her thoughts are more well-prepared than mine will be. I do want to thank UNM CEO Alfredo Ontiveras for being there and making the speech, and he told me that he wasn't gonna be able to say anything, and then he was able to change that that day. He told me he wasn't gonna be able to stay, and then I think he stayed for the entire thing, so I appreciate that. Of the thirty-five comments that were made, his was the only one that was in favor of the current course of action. The other thirty-four were definitely against that. Now, we didn't set, against the current course of action, they were in favor of keeping New Mexico Cancer Center. We did not set the meeting up to be that way. I knew that there was gonna be, I expected about six people to speak that I knew in favor of New Mexico Cancer Center. Two of those were so sick with, with cancer that they didn't show up, so I was only aware of four, four, maybe five, that, that were going to speak. I didn't know that the rest of them were gonna speak in favor of New Mexico Cancer Center. I did, I thought I had pretty well heard it all, but at that meeting, I think we all learned a lot. The tone at the meeting was not a mob mentality. I've been to some school board meetings where people come with half the information or less than that, and they start making all these accusations. The people seemed to me to be pretty well informed with what they were saying. It was emotional, but they weren't speaking out of emotion. They were, they kept the facts straight for, it was impressive how much they kept the facts straight. But we did, we left the meeting with a lot of unanswered questions, and I think that's what Elise and Harry spoke to. I too was gonna call for a special meeting, so I hope that's something that we can do. In fact, it's emboldened here, so. Mr. Henry said this morning, "Time is of the essence." I think he's correct in that. I'd like to get with Abby and Charlene ASAP and find out, I've got some legal questions too about what our authority is and, so that we don't exceed that. People want to get this information to the decision-makers, and so I like your idea about having that meeting where they can come and hear what's been said and maybe tell their side of the story. Some of the trustees did have very legitimate excuses, and I presented that to the group the other night. They, I heard a few scoffs, so I reiterated, I wish I could tell you what their excuses were. They were very good excuses for not being there. So it'd be, I have to say that the trustees, some of them did have some very good excuses. And also, it's my understanding, but I don't know this for sure, that four of the seven trustees are keeping an arm's length from this pending recommendation from the administration. So that's one of my, probably over a hundred questions, is why are three of the trustees directly involved while the other four are keeping an arm's length so that they can be, not make up their mind before the information comes to them. I think I need to say that we don't need more distance between the residents of our community and heal the regional people need to trust the hospital so they'll go there for treatment. And I think that's where Dr. Ski made some comments to that, that we've already lost a lot of our hospital because those who can, can are going elsewhere for service, are sometimes going elsewhere for services. So that, I think that's what I've needed to say about that. Okay, yeah, so moving on then, I have some concerns about the process for trustee selection. So it's my understanding that trustees will, potential trustees for this, basically two vacancies that are, that are coming up, one of those is a physician that will reapply, are due by June fifth, and so they go online to New Mexico, to Grant County, N M dot, what's our website?
Dot com.
Dot com. And they can find the application there. It'd be my recommendation, they not only submit that application, but obviously a resume with the application, and those are due by June fifth. But I did want to speak a little bit to the process, and I think, I think the meeting went well enough the other night that I would like to see, after we have received these applications, for us to have a public forum where they could come, present for five or seven minutes their credentials, and they could hear each other's, and then we could, in some sort of process, very carefully ask two or three questions of each other, whether those questions came from the public or the commission or whatever. One of my questions, just to help me decide who would be the most qualified, if the commission would go for this, I'm just talking kind of theoretically here, is to the four or five who apply, I'm just guessing that number, I don't know, if you were not selected as trustee, or if you can choose yourself to be the trustee, which of the other ones would you choose in line? And I think that would give, just having this discussion, because I know there's some good people applying, and so I think they're gonna come up with better questions than I can think of, just like the other night, they came up with way better facts and figures than I could have come up on my own. So I think just having this discussion for that would be, and so we can, we can talk about that and think about that, I hope. I think finally, well, two more things. Mr. Brown's comments on the cap entity, I have some questions about the cap entity and some concerns that haven't been answered. There's been- There's been some red flags raised in the press, I don't know. Yeah, I've got some questions and some concerns, so I support getting more information, for sure. I want to, lastly, thank Mr. Ontiveras for his report the other day. I think he's made some significant accomplishments here, even though, in his short time, even though I don't see eye to eye with him necessarily on the changes of the Cancer Center. But he pointed out the other day that they finally are going to go live with Meditex 6. It was never a question since he's been here. This has just been something that's been just hanging in the wings and costing millions, and they're gonna go ahead. He said, he did point out that, actually, he pointed out that we're seeing some positive cash flow now, which is welcome. And he said that we're still, we're, might mean, Hila Regional's still rich in staff, so Taffy Arias, when she gets here on May 30th, has some more work to do, obviously. He'll be available for 30 days, he pointed out, and I'm glad for that. And so the last thing I wanted to say, the very last thing, is I think that we may be, whoever the decisions are, may be doing a great disservice to the new CEO, Taffy Arias, by making this decision to change the Cancer Center before she comes here, because she's gonna have to be the one that lives with all the positive or negative results of those changes. So, I think I've said that enough.
Commissioner?
Well, first of all, I'd like to just thank Senator Heinrichs and Udl's offices for representing here.
This is my notes.
Also, just want to congratulate the Cobry and Silver softball teams. They battled it out this state tournament. They met during the state tournament in the regular portion, and Cobry beat them by one point in 10 innings. Then they met in the state championship, and Silver had to beat them twice, and they did. They beat them 6-4 the first game and 4-3 in the final championship game that went eight innings. So these two teams have to be very proud of themselves. I'm proud of them, I know we all are as a county. That just says a lot about our area. So congratulations to the Silver High Fighting Colts softball team for their state championship, and the Cobry Indians for their state runner-up. That was, that was pretty awesome. I know we're, every computer in my office had that game streaming, and I get into that stuff, so congratulations. I think we ought to invite the board to have their board meeting here. That way it comes out on cats. That way there's no questions on what's being said and what have you. I think cats is a very unique tool that we, that we need to take advantage of in our community. And so I think we ought to invite the hospital board to come and have their meeting here. I thank you very much, Mr. Billings, for putting together the meeting. I heard it went really well. Unfortunately, when you have a graduate, there's a lot of things you have to do after school hours, so I wasn't able to make it. So, my apologies to you all for not being here. You know, when it comes to the cap entity, you know, the diversion has always been a big thing for me. I always felt that I needed a business plan to look at to see if it's going to be feasible, so that, you know, there's a lot of planning and studies that go into this, and I always wanted to see an end study. But unfortunately, we've had, we haven't not had one as of yet. And it just seems like there's a lot of wasted money right now. I think we're getting to the point, I mean, we're to the point a while back to where we need to start looking at other projects, but we still need to complete, I think, what we've started when it comes to at least getting the feasibility studies on the actual diversion. We do have a lot of projects throughout the county that we can, that we can come up, that we can actually utilize this money for, like the Twin Sister Project. I mean, that's, the flowing waters are still going and being contaminated every day, flowing right into our tailings, which I think is a shame. That's something we've been fighting and trying to do something with since I've been on the board. So I think that's one of the projects I think we can, we can hopefully use some of that money to complete. I just question one thing, is what other projects are we gonna bring up? And what other problems are these groups going to find with those projects? I mean, we've, we've been literally working on this thing for, golly, I served on the Hurley Town Council 14 years ago, and I represented Hurley on this board. It's horrible that we can never come up with some kind of solution without an, without a different type of group coming and fighting for something being completely wrong, when everybody's heart is in the right place trying to do something better for this community. Not everyone is ever going to agree on one project. They're always gonna find something wrong with that project. But lo and behold, I really do believe that every representative on this cap agency is doing everything they can to better this area, regardless of what these people say and come and say every single meeting. If there are questions that need to be brought up to the cap agency, we always have public input, just like we have in every other meeting. So any commissioners, welcome to come and ask the questions. I mean, I'm sure you have different questions than I do. I mean, I am disappointed that, you know, there's so many things that have happened in the process that are delaying and delaying and delaying, and I don't like it either. But I would like to see this final business plan to make sure that it's not going to be feasible to have a diversion, or to make sure that it is very feasible to have a diversion. But we can't make up our minds if we don't have all of that information in front of us to go either way. And again, if we bring up another project, what kind of fight are they gonna bring against that project? I mean, I just wish that we could come together with all these knowledgeable people, because there's some very knowledgeable people that are fighting us on the diversion. But we need to utilize those minds to put something together that is really going to work for our community. And not fight every single project that we bring out. Because that's all it's been, is a fight. I mean, in a perfect world for these groups, we'd be flying an airplane, looking at the world run itself. And we can't have that. We gotta live, we gotta use our resources to do what's better for our communities. And it's just really mind-boggling, it really is. Sure, there has been a lot of money spent already on studies on this, on this diversion and engineering and what have you. But if it keeps being fought like that, there's gonna be more. And that is never gonna end. So, I mean, I've challenged the director to come together with these entities and start speaking and try and get their ideas on how to maneuver through some of these conflicts. But that's never going to, that's, I really don't think that's ever going to help us, because there's so many different mindsets out there. And you gotta realize that these people that are sitting on this cap agency were appointed by their selective groups who represent them. The people coming in here and fighting us every day are getting paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to do their job, and that's to fight the diversion or any other kind of project that anything's gonna harm, a blade of grass. And we can't do that. As human beings, we gotta live and utilize our resources and try and make things better for the people we leave behind when it's time for us to leave this world. That, that's where I stand. I stand to try and continue to develop infrastructure to help the future of our children and our grandchildren, so they can continue to live here and enjoy the life that we live and have lived for the past five generations in my family. It's really, it's really bothersome that these people are trying to do the best they can in this cap agency, and these other groups that come in here, getting paid so much money to fight this, just stops all progress. That's where, that's where I'm at, that part. I'm sorry, I got a little emotional there, but it's bothersome. I've been on this group now, on this commission now for six and a half years, and all it has been is a fight when it comes to the cap agency. You hear the cap agency, it sounds like a bad word now. And it's not. It's a bunch of people that are really trying to do the best they can to secure this water for our children's future. Again, on the, on the board, I really feel that hopefully we get some good people and more than one or two or three people putting in for this board. I mean, when it gets tough, people usually run away. And hopefully we get some brave souls to put in for this board and come in here and do something good for, for the hospital. Again, I think that all these people that we have put into this hospital board were picked and chosen from a list that we, that, of volunteers that come in here and want to serve. And I don't think their intentions are ever to go against cancer patients. Their intentions are to always do what's better for our hospital. We appointed these people. I appointed these people. And I would like to say that I trust these people to do the best that they can, because they were the ones that had the guts to apply and serve. Remember, they're volunteers, they don't get paid a red cent for serving on this board. So, they are not, they are not poisoned, guys. They're doing the best they can. They really are. So, I'd like to, you know, stop taking this approach that, "We gotta nail these guys." No. We gotta try and get them to do the best they can and continue to do the best they can, even though sometimes we fall short on any board that you serve on. So I just want to, we gotta continue to respect these guys and to support them. There's an RFP in, in place, so that RFP has to take its course. If they find something that they could come back and, and award it back to the old Cancer Center, then, then maybe that's what's gonna happen. But the RFP process is in place, we cannot interrupt that process. Because then we're facing legalities from the other side. So, I mean, right now, we're, it's, I don't know what else to say, but it seems like it's a win-lose at this point. That's all I've got.
All right. I normally don't say much, but I got a hell of a lot to say today.
A lot of pages here.
First of all, I want to thank Melanie and Cynthia, that's what I was teasing Gabe earlier, for coming to our meeting. You got to hear from all the elected officials, you got to hear from us, you got to see the tough decisions we're having to make. I hope you guys take that back to the senators and tell them about the pain that rural New Mexico's local governments are having. It's getting very difficult out here, because we're not only getting hit from the federal side, we're getting hit from the state side. And we're having to make very tough decisions on services for residents of our county. Please let them know that we are doing the best we can with what little we have. But we do appreciate you coming, and I meant it at the very beginning, you're always welcome, and you guys know that. Cap entity, about that long. I think it's irony that now that the cap entity is in place, all those same people that were fighting to keep us out of the cap entity now want us to take over the cap entity. And they also fought the other local governments and begged them and poured them not to join the cap entity, when Grant County had the possibility of having the majority of the members on the cap entity at one time. And the same people fought that. That's all I got to say about that. Like forced up. There were several references to my remarks on Tuesday night about the last time the commission became involved in hospital affairs. At that time, we voted no confidence in the administration. However, that doesn't make a lot of sense today, since the administration that made most of these decisions are no longer there. This issue is also a very different issue from that time. This is a contractual issue. Commissioners are explicitly, do not have authority over contractual issues to an autonomous board they have appointed to a hospital. If you get involved in contract negotiations in between that, you are putting yourself out there on your own without the backing of the insurance from the commission protecting you. Just letting you all know that. Now, there are some questions in my mind as we continue to, should we continue to manage the hospital of this size like we are, without professional services? I had the benefit of serving as a trustee from the, and I don't know the exact dates, and if I said them, somebody would show me where I'm wrong. So it was sometime in the late 90s to sometime in the early 2000s. During that time, GNC always had a contract with a management company. At that time, it was Quorum Health Services. I'm not even sure that exists in exactly the same way now. But sometime from the time I got off that, the Board of Trustees, till I became a commissioner, those trustees chose to go it alone without management services. I'm gonna tell you right now, I think in my mind, that was the worst decision ever made by the Board of Trustees. Those services not only helped us manage the hospital, it gave us another voice, it gave us opinions from peer groups across the nation that were having the same issues. We didn't have to go it alone, they chose to go it alone. They not only did that, they trained each and every trustee. I know today trustee training is non-existent. We went to one or two schools every year as trustees to learn how to be a better trustee, so we could actually question what the management was doing. We have set up our trustees to fail, previous trustees have set up our trustees to fail. I agree with Commissioner Ramos, these people are all good people that stood up and said, "I'll do the job that's not, not a great job. I did it for however many years." I would encourage the Board of Trustees, the current Board of Trustees, to re-implement the management service. I know there's been a lot of change in health care. I'm not sure any of it for the good. I'm pretty convinced at this point that eight years ago, we were better off than we are today, as far as health care goes, at least in Grant County. Well, like I said, I really encourage them to, to look at a management firm. I've, I've, I've said this to these guys several times, so they're gonna, they're gonna laugh at me, but in closing, if you think a professional's expensive, hire an amateur. Because that's what they're gonna tell you, a management firm's too expensive. So, that's all I have to say. Does anybody want any seconds? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Oh, no, we're not going to adjourn, we're going to an executive session. Sorry about that.
Sorry, move it.
Now, there's no motion.
If there's a convenient spot to have a special meeting.
If there are three of us who want that.
I think that's fine. I think that's great.
I have a problem with it. I think you ought to send your questions to them in writing, so you don't surprise them. That's an excellent policy. So I will get with Abby and Charlene to talk about the mechanics of that. And remember, they don't have to come. They are an autonomous board.
I also would like to support Billy's idea about some kind of public forum for selecting the trustees. I realize that there may be some details to work out in exactly what that would look like, and, you know, how we would do it, but I don't disagree with how difficult that job is and, you know, the fact that sometimes nobody wants to do the hard work. But I also think that we have a responsibility for making the best choices that we possibly can, and that having some kind of process where we do it, that all of us can, can discuss it and make the best choice possible in favor of.
Can I get a motion to move into executive session?
So moved.
Motion second to go into executive session. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Commissioner Brown, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes, I will.
Commissioner Brown, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramos, are you aware that you will be?
Yes, ma'am.
Chairman Caston, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Edwards, are you aware that you will be entering executive session?
Yes, ma'am.
We're in an executive session, we will adjourn from executive session, and no action will be taken.